Well, we're now live and it's six o'clock. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Lakewood City Council for Wednesday, October fourteenth. The order, Madam Cork, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Brainster.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen. He is not with us. And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a forum?
Thank you. So the new business on the agenda for tonight is a review of the 2021-2022 proposed biennial budget by departments for the police, public works, engineering, municipal court, and administrative services. Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, just real quick, like last time, going to turn it back over to you. We have Chief Mike Zarro here this evening for the police department, followed by Mr. Paul Bucic in regards to public works engineering. And then you'll also have an opportunity here for the first time from Judge Lisa Mansfield, specific to her area of responsibility, the municipal court. And then lastly, we'll have Ms. Taz Kraus to talk about the administrative service department. So again, Mayor, back to you to call upon those respective individuals in order.
All right. So first up, Chief Zarro.
All right, Mayor Anderson and council members, thank you and good evening. Just confirming that everyone can hear me okay. Very good. So the budget that's proposed is to fund all of our services that we provide here in the department for personnel, equipment, and training. And just to recap, the divisions that we fund and to provide those services, we have our four basic divisions. We have our patrol division, which is responsible for responding to 911 calls for service, making traffic stops, responding to collisions. And that's obviously a 24-hour-a-day service. And so it needs to be staffed as such. Our criminal investigation unit, which follows up on all the reports that are generated by generally by patrol that are taken on any number of crimes. And in criminal investigations, that's even broken down further into units of major crimes, who handles serious assaults and homicides. We have CIU or excuse me, SIU that handles the special assaults, which are domestic violence assaults against children and sexual assaults. And then our property pro act unit that handles all of our property crimes and robberies. And then we also have our special operations, which deals with all vice, which could be drugs or, I guess, any other vice, prostitution or just vice in general. And then under our specialty units, that's the fourth division that we have, that really encompasses quite a few different services on the department. From our traffic unit, who their primary function is enforcement of traffic laws and investigation of serious collisions. We have our neighborhood policing unit or CSRT, which has our neighborhood policing officers, our code enforcement officers, and animal control. And then we also have all the, I guess, additional duty assignments that fall under that as well, such as SRT and marine services and the just the general specialty units. So those are all under specialty units, and those are all, each of those divisions are headed by a lieutenant and who are supervised by the assistant chief. And then I oversee the chief, or excuse me, the assistant chief. Some of the things that we were able to accomplish with those services in 2019 and 20, if you'll remember going back, we, you know, continued our work with the mental health, the behavioral health contact team. We were able to get our bike team, bicycle team up and running again and really got that going consistently throughout the year in 19 and 20, or well, I should say 19. With, you know, focusing on officer wellness was important to us. And one of the things that we accomplished with, you know, relatively minimal impact to the budget was partnering with a mental health counselor specifically for officers. And that's been, I think, very successful. And I, we've actually had other agencies reach out to us and ask how we were doing that. Some of our community outreach events that we started or continued in 19 and 20, cocoa with a cop, coffee with a cop. If you'll remember, back in early 19, we did the art contest for our motorcycles, our new motorcycles, where the grade school kids actually held an art contest and for the winners had their drawings put on the side of our motorcycles, and they're still there to this day. And then we also held our first citizens academy last year. And we actually are in the middle of our second academy as we, as we speak, meeting every Thursday. And actually, next Thursday is graduation for the current class. This year, you know, we're talking about 19 and 20, certainly two drastically different years when you put them side by side as far as the challenges we faced between COVID and, you know, civil unrest around the country and the economic impacts of COVID, just a lot of, a lot of challenges that were thrown our way, that were unprecedented, that we were having to deal with and all, you know, at the same time, still meet our mission and still respond to 911 calls and investigate serious crimes. And it's just been, it's been a challenging year, but I think we've, we've done quite well at meeting those challenges. As far as COVID-19 goes, we, you know, like all of us, we were faced with, you know, what to do with our workforce in COVID-19. And it's a lot of what we do can't be done remotely. It can't be done from home, and we are a hands-on business. So figuring out a way to do that safely and mitigate the risks of COVID-19 as best we can was a high priority for us. And again, I think we met those challenges pretty well. You know, having some staff work from home, administrative staff that could providing PPE, you know, as much as we could to the officers in the field and staying up to date with what seems like daily changes in guidance from the CDC and health department. So with all that, that was presented quite a challenge. And that was, you know, layered on top of everything else that we were looking at, you know, or faced with. We did have our own officer-involved shooting that led to some protests here in the city, which may have come whether we had our officer-involved shooting or not. But four or five pretty significant demonstrations or marches in the city that, you know, we, we participated in by providing crowd control or not crowd control, traffic control, and just creating a safe environment for the protesters and all the bystanders. So that was doing, you know, one of those is a challenge, but doing five in a short amount of time is more so. And I think we handled that exceptionally well. Our in-car camera system will be by the end of this year, and it's been a years-long process of getting, of trying and trying them out and getting them implemented. But by the end of this year, we'll have our entire patrol fleet, our traffic unit and our NPOs. So essentially, all of our marked vehicles will be outfitted with in-car cameras by the end of this year. So that'll be completed by the end of this budget biennium. One other, you know, when I talked about, mentioned earlier, some of our community outreach and connections, something that came back to us this year was LAPAC, the Lakewood African-American Police Advisory Committee. And that's something I'm proud that we're to be a part of is we, that gets started up again. But I also want to point out that that was community-driven. That's something that members in the community reached out to me and said that they wanted to start it again and get it going to try and better our, our standing in the community and just improve our relationship. So that is still ongoing. That's something that I hope to carry on well beyond this and the next biennium. But we'll see, it just takes effort. One other thing that, you know, was a big focus of mine throughout the year, kind of sort of a subset of the officer-involved shooting discussions and the deadly use of force discussions was our efforts here in the county to stand up a countywide deadly force investigation team, of which I took the lead role, or at least a significant role in coordinating and helping to put together. That actually started at the end of 19, and we are, made a lot of progress. And I anticipate that being up and fully functional and operational by the end of this year. We actually, this Saturday, have some large, large-scale training that we're putting on for all the citizen representatives from each jurisdiction. It's going to be via Zoom, but that'll be a big step towards getting done because once that's done, then we can work on identifying, formally identifying the investigators that will be a part of the team. So a lot of work certainly, but it's coming to fruition here soon. And I think we'll, like I said, see something by the end of the year. Or something more by the end of the year, I should say. As we move forward in the next biennium, one of, you know, there's a lot of what we're looking, you know, planning for is some of what we're already dealing with, and that's COVID-19. It's not going to stop come January 1. We're still going to be dealing with the, the effects of that, both the, you know, the operational effects and the economic impacts from that. So we'll, we'll still work to make sure we keep everybody as healthy and as safe as we can and also work to help with recovery where the police department can do that. And that's economic recovery and social recovery and whatever else we can do to, just to come back from a, you know, 12-month-plus-long pandemic. And through all of this, through last year and, and what I, or the last two years and coming up in the next two years, what I also want to maintain too is not lose sight of why the police department's here. And that, that has to do with responding to crime and reports of crime. And I think we've done a good job in identifying trends and reducing crime in certain areas and at least understanding why it might be going up in others. But I want to keep focusing on that as well, the, some of the reductions in crime rates that we've seen over the past couple of years, particularly in persons' crimes or aggravated assaults. There's, it's, you know, between Tacoma, us, and our neighboring Pierce County areas, there's a lot of serious persons' crimes going on that, mostly gun crimes, that I think as, as a region, we need to start focusing on more and trying to drive down. And that's something that I will hopefully, you know, as, not just as our police department, but as a region, we can focus on. You know, with the economic impacts, and you've seen the proposals in our budget for the next two years as it relates to personnel, there will be essentially a freeze on positions. We're not eliminating them. It's just understanding that at least for the next two years, it's anticipated, we won't be in an economic position to fill those. So it's going to be, you know, managing our personnel and our hiring with that in mind. We've always managed our vacancies and understood where we were at with the budget, and not just the department's budget, but the city's budget and what hiring somebody means and what that, those dollars mean to the rest of the city if we don't fill that position. So this isn't really anything new for us as far as managing positions. It's just a matter, in this case, of, of knowing for the next two years what that is going to mean. So we will have that reduction, we'll have, you know, that'll affect training as well. One other area that we want, are looking to grow is in our behavioral health contact team. We have, you know, Carolyn has been in place, and I, I almost say them together, Carolyn and Ralph, because it's almost like they've been one person for the past five years, I guess now, as they've been working. They've done some fantastic work. The city manager and, and our community and economic development director and I have talked, and there is room for, for doing even more with another mental health professional contracted through Greater Lakes. So that's the expansion that we want to do. We think that that person can not only do more on the police side, but with our rental housing safety program, there's a lot of, a lot of people that they come across that are in need of resources that a mental health professional could provide. And we think that could help the community greatly from that respect as well. Now, I mentioned Ralph and Carolyn a minute ago. Just a side note, Ralph is retiring next summer. So we're losing a huge part of our behavioral health contact team. I'm confident we'll find somebody that, that can step in behind him, but there are going to be big shoes to fill for sure, just because he's such, such a dedicated person and such a value to that program. The other expansion that you'll see is with our code enforcement officers. We are going to add one more code enforcement officer. That is, you know, in evaluating the caseload of our current code enforcement officers and how much they have on their plate and what more another code enforcement officer could be doing to help improve some of the nuisance issues and that we see around the city, I think we can get quite a bit of value out of even just one more. So we propose that in this budget coming up in the next two years as well. With that, I think I want to just take some time and answer any questions you might have about what's been presented to you. I know you all have heard from the city manager about the, the city's budget in general. You've, you know, had it presented to you, you have your, your paper copy and or seen it electronically. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but those are the services we intend to provide with the budget that's been proposed.
Thanks, Chief. I'd like to, the record reflect that Deputy Mayor Whalen joined us early in the chief's presentation. Are there any questions for Chief Zarro? Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the report. I'm just curious, do you know how many people that will be retiring within the next two years?
Well, I know two for sure. We have one in December, Sergeant Tom Stewart, and then Ralph Rocco next summer. So two in the next six months, I guess, or eight months.
Have they?
Oh, those I know for sure. One thing that I've mentioned to this council before is that's, it's going to accelerate starting in the biennium after that. I know in 2023 and 2024, we have a significant portion of our workforce here at the department that are reaching retirement age and I believe intend on retiring. So, but for the next two years, I know of two, those two for sure.
Are they in sep, they're in separate departments?
Yes, Sergeant Stewart supervises the SAU, the special assault unit, and Ralph is our behavioral health contact, that team officer. And with Sergeant Stewart's retirement, that would also mean a promotion for somebody to sergeant.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions, Chief. First of all, the four positions that are not going to be filled, they're currently vacant, and are they currently vacant? And where are they at?
They are currently vacant. We have two in our traffic committee and two in special ops.
Okay. And what, what's the impact of not filling those positions?
Well, the impact, like, so right now, we have four traffic officers. And without those other two, that is less proactive enforcement because they are the primary officers for, and the primary unit for investigating collisions. So that takes some time. So as you have those four officers, you have fewer officers to respond to collisions, that means there's fewer officers to be out enforcing traffic laws in between investigating collisions. So there's fewer, less enforcement there. And then from our special ops unit, it's sort of the same. It's a very, it's proactive work. And if you, the fewer officers or investigators you have, the fewer vice cases that are being generated and investigated.
So a couple of questions, and one is kind of an accounting question. But the first one is on page six of the, of the budget stuff that we got, the purchase of a new special response team vehicle for almost a quarter million dollars. Can you talk about that?
Yes, that is, we go back to when we left Metro SWAT and decided to start SRT, we, there was two armored vehicles that we had access to at, with Metro SWAT. One of those, we no longer have access to, and the other one, we do. However, it is older, it's contingent on availability, and it's, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to speak ill of it because it's something that we're able to borrow when, when we need it. But it's, it is older and it, it's not the greatest vehicle, but as far as some sound issues that it has and other things when you need to be able to hear on a, on a scene. So the armored vehicle is, would be a purchase to replace that or buy one of our own that we would have sole access to and sole control over. And it would be newer and just fit, fit our needs.
And I, and I see the idea is to pay it out of seizure funds or our half, and then the other half from federal money. So do we have the federal money in, in hand?
It's, they're actually two different seizure accounts. One is state mark, you're in the other is federal seizure.
Okay, okay. And so what's the status? Are we intending on loaning it out to other agencies?
No, any agency that would need one already has one or has access to one. So, I mean, we would, if, if there was a mutual aid request, we would evaluate it on a case-by-case basis, but I don't anticipate needing to loan it out.
Okay. And then, and then the more accounting question is, I noticed in one of the years, 20 or 21, we're not funding replacement reserves for vehicles. And so what's the impact of that?
For that, I would need to refer to Taw Kraus on that one.
Okay, yeah, I think so too.
Is that it, Mr. Bokey?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Brainster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Chief. I just had, had a few questions and, you know, in your accomplishments for 1920, I think it's important to note the successful transition out of Metro SWAT and forming and creating an operational and very functional SRT is something that is noteworthy to be able to go and do that. On the organizational chart, under criminal investigations unit, you continue to have a bullet for investigate officer-involved shootings. And, but that is, perhaps our members of the new county team would be drawn out of that unit, but I think including it on your organizational chart in that way might create an impression that we're investigating our own. And it might be that, that bullet is confusing if we're going to leave this presentation up in, for, for public, for public viewing, or at least raise questions. I had something I'm trying to understand that we, if we add one mental health professional, but we don't add another police officer, how exactly are we really enhancing to the point of where we're multiplying the impact of our current mental health contact team? You know, if we're just putting in your budget, a mental health professional, but who is going to not work hand in hand with a police officer and is going to be more of a city social services asset, I don't, or exactly how do you, you see that? When I first heard we were going to fund another mental health, I was, I went to the conclusion that we were establishing a second partnership between an officer and a thing. And your presentation sounds like that is not the plan.
Sure. All, if I could back up real quick, I, I want to give, as far as your comments about SRT, I definitely agree and appreciate that. The, the credit fully goes to the officers on that team. They, they stood up or stepped up when, when it was asked of them and just, and got the work done that needed to be done, and, and they're making that team successful. As far as the bullet point on the org chart, you're absolutely right, it could create some confusion. That is the, the division where investigators will be drawn from to participate in PC fit, but clarifying that might be, might make more sense in, in just simply saying that, that they're participate in PC fit. So as far as the behavioral health contact team and the addition of the MHP, that one of the roles that the MHPs play is also follow-up with individuals and doesn't always necessitate an officer accompanying them. It could, but not always. So the role I see this new person playing is sort of working with the police department, maybe sometimes with an officer, maybe just following up on a concern an officer has about an individual at an address or working with the inspectors from the rental health, or well, rental housing safety program to follow up on individuals there that they see are in need of services or possibly in need of services. So it, I do think we can get value with another MHP without necessarily adding an officer. And I'm fine with that person being housed at the police department because they can, they will still be doing work with and on behalf of the police department in addition to maybe another department in the city.
As a contract, a person who comes to us under contract, and with, with what you described, what's the supervision model for this person's work and making decisions about what are their priorities or what are they doing on a general basis or on a specific basis?
Well, they're managing their caseload as best, you know, at, we, we hire an MHP and they, they respond, are still responsive to their supervisors or responsible to their supervisors at Greater Lakes. We have work that we expect them to do, and if, if we see it's not getting done, then we contact Greater Lakes about it. But, you know, to, to a great extent, we kind of just trust that they, that they're doing what an MHP is supposed to be doing because we aren't MHPs and we rely on Greater Lakes to, to keep at least an eye on them from a distance.
Okay, so is Greater Lakes contact for this contract going to be the assistant chief?
No, it's always been me is, I don't know that they've worked with anybody else. I'm still on their board of directors, and I've always been the one that has communicated back and forth regarding the contract.
Okay, I, I guess that I would ask that you take a look at the performance measures that, given the increased staffing and the disorganization that you're describing of what the performance measured data measured data in 2021 and 2022 would be so that we can determine whether this is in fact, uh, an area that's got a lot of interest around, uh, mental health, but so that we can satisfy ourselves that we've gone to a model that's making a difference. Cause you, the, 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 the other area that I kind of want to understand is the elimination of the two CSO positions and replacing them with a code enforcement officer and a building inspector. Although there's an umbrella called the CSRT that has had code enforcement, uh, under it for a while and it's had in, in its, you know, who's been under the umbrella has changed over the years. Uh, I don't see those two positions having the the ongoing non-reactive relationships with citizens and in the community that the community has come to appreciate that, uh, that they have gotten from CSO. Certainly code enforcement work and building inspectors do a lot, but, uh, I'm not particularly clear how we pick up the void. And the community will certainly already senses a void. Uh, where there are, there, there are not CSOs that, 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 that did, uh, some of those things that weren't necessarily always specific incident related things, but that were communicating. So it seems like that role. Where does it go? Does it go to the patrol division in the community policing folks or does it go to the, specialty division in the neighborhood policing unit? Uh, and how are they going to step up their game from what they do now to create the right impression in the community that, that we're, we're, we're still engaged with them?
I think it, it's exactly what you just described and it's the NPOs doing more. Um, there, there was always the expectation that they had, you know, were connected at some level with the, the different, uh, community groups and neighborhood associations. I think that's, it's just a matter of them continuing that and as you said, stepping their game up and some of it's going to come back to the command staff as well and us being out there more, uh, with some of these neighborhood associations.
That, um, and NPOs, uh, in community policing are not areas that you're seeing impacted by, um, not hiring the four positions and leaving them vacant for two years?
No, that's, um, that's traffic and, and special ops is, is where we have those identified. Um, but I will tell you, if we have a significant amount of retirements all at once um, or departures all at once for one reason or another, um, we have to maintain a patrol staffing levels, uh, to be able to respond to the calls for service there and you know, at some point it might, it might come down to that, uh, moving people from, uh, NPOs into, into patrol or, or further depleting, um, traffic or the, or special ops.
And I just had a question about the, uh, Lakewood African American Police Advisory Committee and you, you mentioned how they were sort of came back to you and wanted to reestablish connections. That, uh, is this a citizen group that manages their own membership?
They, they absolutely do. That's not one that's, um, managed by the city at all. They're completely independent and manage their own meetings. We, we hold one a month here, uh, but they manage their own meetings and their own membership and their own messaging and communication.
Uh, uh, other than support for departmental staff that support that relationship, but is there anything else in the budget that's supporting that?
No, there's nothing else that's needed to, to support that. At least it's been asked.
Okay, that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Waylon.
Thank you. Sorry for chiming in a little later on this evening with the Zoom stuff. Chief, a quick question about the behavioral contact team. So with Officer Rocco retiring later on this summer and the addition of a second behavioral health professionals, what, what's the plan to integrate those folks into the department? Will Carolyn still be on board? So she's got some, you know, institutional knowledge, right?
Absolutely. Yeah. Carolyn will still be on board. Uh, at least as far as I know, she hasn't given any indication that she's leaving. So, uh, and then if this, uh, if the budget passes as proposed and we'll, then we'll communicate with Greater Lakes about who to bring on next. And hopefully have that person on board, you know, well before Ralph leaves. Then we'll make sure and identify a replacement for Ralph well before he leaves as well. So it's a smoother transition. And it's not going to, it's, it has to be the right person. Ralph was the absolute perfect person for this, uh, team as we started it. We're not going to get another Ralph, but whoever we pick will, I, I'm, I can confidently say, um, be able to, to do what we expect of him.
So it's going to be one person likely?
Yes.
With the two behavioral people? Okay. And that person's going to come out of your org chart from, uh, probably patrol likely?
Well, so when Ralph leaves, cause that's, uh, we will, um, announce the position and then see, it could be another NPO that puts in for it. It's someone that's already an NPO. Um, or even an investigator that might have an interest in that position.
Okay. So in addition to the one FTE which, you know, runs in the six figures for all of them and the behavioral health, uh, monies that we're investing, what do you believe are going to be the, um, measurables that we're going to look at to ensure success for the program? I understand last year we had what 500 calls roughly that we responded to and, you know, we, we don't necessarily see the, the breakdown of what those mean. We get the success stories, you know, through the stories, the vignettes a little bit, but what, what's going to be the parameters by which we all measure success for the program, given the investment?
Yeah, it's hard to, to measure large scale, um, uh, measure, uh, outcomes. It's, when we've looked at that before, what we've looked at are, uh, individuals and how many times they've called 911 repeatedly and we've been able to intervene and those calls stop. Or, um, just people with mental health problems in general that patrol is responding to frequently. And once Ralph and Carolyn get involved, those interventions go down dramatically.
Okay.
Uh, I think, uh, you know, we do have a, it's essentially a disposition code that officers enter into calls for service regarding, uh, that it's a mental health code. So you can go back and look and see, we've had this many mental health calls for service or mental calls for service that had some mental health component. Um, I do think over the next two years, we can look and see if there's any kind of change, uh, in that, uh, in the numbers of, of calls that have that disposition. Uh, but it's, a lot of it's difficult because a, a lot of it, the, the, an increase in people with mental health problems in, in Lakewood might be completely out of our control. It might be something, you know, so, uh, uh, a mental health, uh, organization might buy an apartment complex and
Right.
and use that for housing or, or something like that.
So with regard to the calls for service, and, and I'm just trying to get my head around this. What would you say anecdotally is the breakdown of the, the service providers to whom those calls are fielded that have the, the greatest impact? And it probably runs a gamut, I'm sure, but um, obviously Greater Lakes for people who are in crisis. I mean, what, what are some of the other anecdotal handoffs that we've seen that have been successful from mental health provider to whom in the community that provide services?
Uh, well, um, for us, it, I mean, St. Clair, I've, I've got to include them because that's where a lot of, uh, the folks end up going is to the emergency room there.
Which is, which is not the best option, obviously.
Absolutely not, um, because they really, they look for the same resources on the backend that we do and a lot of times it's not there. The, uh, and I'm going to blank on the name of the business.
Why is that? Do we take them to the emergency room? I mean, that's similar to what Wes Pierce would do, right? If they have a call for service and someone's in crisis, so they take them there. Is it because there's not enough transitional uh, space in Lakewood with providers that provide services like Greater Lakes or what?
There is, but there also has to be a place where if somebody is involuntarily, um, detained to take them where they, they're to a place that has the ability to detain somebody until they can be seen by a social worker in a, I'm going to say, say DMHP, but that's not the term anymore. Somebody that can do an official, uh, hold on them. The other, you know, there's other resources like, uh, it's, it's in Fife. There, there's a, they used to be on Western State Hospital grounds, but they built a place out in Fife. That's a place that they can go to, they can be taken, but that, some of that's dependent on space as well.
That's that county facility, right? That's got what? Maybe 16 beds or something like that?
Something like that. I think it's, uh, privately, it's a private business.
Okay. All right. So are there any sort of, I mean, not that it helps with your budget, but gaps in the community service that preclude us from providing the best options for folks who have need? We, we responded to call for service. We've got the behavioral health specialists that can identify and send folks to whomever or wherever. What, what's the hole that isn't being filled? Not necessarily by your budget, which is the topic tonight, but by the community's budget?
There needs to be, uh, two things in my opinion. There needs to be one place that we can take people where they can get an array of services.
Okay.
Um, and it's not just mental health, but it's, you know, detox services, uh, chemical dependency, um, some housing. You know, medical treatment. There needs to be one place that you can take them and has to be able to, you know, whatever it is, meet those variety of, of needs and services. Uh, and at the same time, the threshold for involuntary commitment in Washington state is extremely high.
Right.
You know, to, to have, you know, to have to wait till somebody is an imminent threat to themselves or others before we can involuntarily take them somewhere, that, that's, that's, that's too high. I mean, there has to be something more in line with the need for treatment than waiting till it gets to that point. And, you know, we're obviously talking about things beyond Lakewood PD and our budget, but.
You're on mute, Chief.
Sorry, the last couple of words were the most dramatic too. You really missed out.
Yeah.
Yeah. But those, those couple of things are what we're really missing is, uh, a change in the, the threshold for involuntary commitment and then, uh, full service place to be able to take them. Once we do, that decision is made.
Okay. So it goes back to my initial question. So with the additional funding that we're providing for the second mental health, uh, specialist to help us with this endeavor, how will we measure success as a community?
We could look at, uh, uh, referrals and intakes, uh, to Greater Lakes. I know that they, uh, they count.
All we have other than
Right.
St. Clair, right?
Yep, uh, they count new patients. Um, that's one of their measurables. So that we could look at how many referrals to Greater Lakes actually make it, you know, onto their books. Um, or we could look at the other mental health providers that are out there too, that Ralph and Carolyn might be referring people to. And remember too, the, the purpose of the behavioral health contact team, um, wasn't, um, it was because we were being the sole, uh, provider that we, we were who people were relying on when somebody was in crisis and we needed some other resource than just us. So that, I, I think that's meeting that need because it, um, but I think now we're at a point where it's, we're sort of expanding what that role is. But some of the resources on the backend are still needed.
Right. We're the transition. There still needs to be the service on the community.
Right.
With regard to the reduction effectively by not funding for additional FTEs, uh, likely in patrol, right?
Well, no, it's in, uh, traffic and special ops.
Okay. So with regard to patrol, one of the things that, you know, most of us hear from the community is either property crime issues or issues with regard to knuckleheads doing stuff with regard to properties, you know, after business hours in our business community. So are we having, uh, do you think a, a challenge with fully funding that endeavor based on what you're seeing with regard to those calls for service? The business community especially?
Yeah, I don't, um.
I'm concerned that we've got a lot of patrol deputies out there.
Officers.
Have a lot of officers, excuse me. We still have a lot of knuckleheads that
Right.
in the community doing dumb stuff that's having an impact. Are we adequately staffed with this budget?
Uh, we're not adding police staff with this budget. Um, that is, uh, maintaining our current patrol staffing. A lot of the types of crimes that you're referring to, we can, you know, and I've said before, we can park a car right in front of the business and nothing will happen while the car is there, but soon as they're out of sight, then, you know, that's when they, they come out of the woodwork and, and commit their crimes. So it's, it's just a matter of presence.
Yeah, well, I mean, based on that, I mean, money is money. I get that, but if you had a magic wand, you had more money, where would you put it?
Well, um, if I had, uh, more money, I mean, it, if we're just looking at staffing issues, um, maybe into CSRT where we could, you know, have officers that we could dedicate to special emphases like that, and that's all that they do. So they're not necessarily tied to the radio or calls for service.
Very good. That's all I had. Uh, some of the other issues on the specific dollar amounts are all tied to the various contracts we have with the different, uh, union representations, but I'll leave that discussion for another day and the vagaries of the benefits versus, uh, the salary positions. It's interesting.
Yeah.
That's all based on dependence, I assume, right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your work.
Thanks.
More to follow on the community stuff. We got to figure that out.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for the, uh, presentation. I want to just point out to you that you haven't done a good job. You've done an excellent job and you should take credit for leadership in bringing that team together, that countywide team that, uh, uh, explores or examines any kind of officer-involved shooting. Now, we just had a discussion here and the deputy mayor just asked you, if he had more money, what would you do with it? And I, and that leads me to my question. Could you take the $250,000 you have line item for, for that, um, that assault vehicle and use it for what we've just been talking about? In a way that I've been looking at this question is, how often does the department use that vehicle?
Well, first of all, just one correction on language that I think is kind of important. It's not an assault vehicle. It's, it's an armored vehicle that, you know, keeps off the people inside and behind it from getting shot. Um, there's no, there's no weaponry on it or anything else. And it's one of those things where, um, anytime the team would be called out, they would use it. Uh, and I can think of one, uh, in particular, one mission in particular where they had, there were, it was a person that had shot at officers and when the team went there, and this was in 2016, they were able to get close enough to defend, um, uh, Springbrook Park as essentially because they had an armored vehicle. So it's, it's definitely a life-saving piece of equipment. Now, I will go back to one of the, the, I guess, policies that the city's always had on spending and that's not to use one-time monies for ongoing expenditures. Um, any, any, the money that we're using for this, this armored vehicle is, um, it's essentially one-time money. It's, it's seizure funds. It's not something we can necessarily count on every year and, um, to use that or plan to use that for any of the, like the behavioral health contact team stuff, which we do plan on, on continuing, um, would be contrary to direction I've received in the past in our, our financial practices. which we do plan on, on continuing, would be contrary to direction I've received in the past in our, our financial practices.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I just add to the potential repositories or referral sources for the mental health professionals for next year would include the Cali's Crisis Recovery Center in Parkland. It's, you know, should be operational before the end of the year. But, and the big but there is, it doesn't address the multifaceted site that you have suggested. It's more of a replication of the Fife and Greater Lakes facilities. Different scale. Is there a way to get a little bit of detail, quantifying what the mental health team or now two individuals is doing? And you, you mentioned having codes, but we, we know at least anecdotally that we've deferred 911 calls because early on we had some individuals that were calling regularly and, and once they got help, that stopped. But it would seem that our goals here are to deter aid calls, deter hospitalization instead of mental health treatment, deter taking people to jail, although during COVID, we can't take many people to jail. And is there a way to code the output? You know, this, this person went to Greater Lakes. This person had, you know, was less severe, but we've, and the MHP followed through and they got hooked up with the Cohen Veterans Center. This person really had physical health issues and referred to the emergency room. So we can tell out of those 500 contacts that we did something other than just create a contact.
Uh, we certainly could, and that I think goes back to my, my comment about it being difficult to do it and on a large scale, but we can on an individual basis. We can bring this, we can show, okay, here's what the, here's what the outcome was for this individual. Because it is such an individualized thing, not every person's going to respond the same or require the same thing. But we can certainly look at the individuals that they deal with. I, I can give you one other, I guess, concrete example of one of the things they do. We've had for several weeks now, a person that lives in Woodbrook call 911 to report arguments that she's having that, that don't exist. Because she is on Ralph and Carolyn's, I guess, client list, they're, they're familiar with her and they, they cut that call off. And even though the call comes in every day, they're able to say that we're not responding there. So patrol doesn't have to worry about it. And it's, it's things like that where you might not see necessarily a hard measurable because that's not somebody that we could necessarily involuntarily commit or, or who would be open to treatment. That's somebody that just, she's, you know, repeatedly using the 911 system and Ralph and Carolyn are the ones that are able to sort of step in and keep patrol from having to respond. So that's, that's an individual example and there's others that I could get for you like that.
I'm thinking more cumulatively, just see where they're going. I mean, we're not, you know, the, the, the department and this mental health professional or professionals are not going to be the ones that are treating anyone.
Right.
At least we can. And I'm thinking down the road when the, the state may add funding for this. There may be federal grants available and if we have data, since we were a leader in implementing this type of program around here. So if we A have a history and B have some data to back up our, any anecdotal references to success, we may be able to get outside funding in the future, so.
I will, I will certainly talk with Ralph and Carolyn and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I wanted to just come back to one sort of generalized budget thing of where I'm trying to decide where in the budget where there is some indication that we're working on things. And in the, in the city's key performance indicators for public safety, there are a couple that we haven't met our target over the couple of years that had to do with satisfaction with police and feelings of safety within the community, which are indicators that are largely fed by survey information. And then we recently dealt with the change to the code in fireworks, but had a understanding from the discussion that that's, that's also a, something that has got an education and, and interaction with the community to improve. And I guess where in the budget is there something to be able to address these robustly enough?
Do you, are you, you mean specifically the fireworks?
Well, no, I'm, I'm actually more, actually more concerned about the moving the needle on satisfaction and feelings of safety. And, you know, how do we, you know, what resources do we need to not just keep doing what we've already been doing and getting the same result?
Well, one of the, one of the tough parts about what you're asking is making people feel safe. Now, if you, I, I remember that survey, they, in that, they said they felt safe at work, they felt safe at home, but not in the general public. So if they're at work and they're at home and they feel safe, I'm not sure where, where else? Is it just out driving around or going to the grocery store? It's this, the idea of helping people feel safe is a little tough for me to, to tackle because I can show somebody statistically that they're very safe, that they're unlikely to be a victim of a crime. They're unlikely to be, you know, struck by lightning. But when they look at their phones and they look at social media and the mainstream media and they see, you know, the next thing that's going to kill them, it's hard to overcome that and, and let them know that it's okay to feel safe. So it, that's one of the, I, I've struggled with that before and I think we've, we've talked a little bit about that before where I'm not sure how to make people feel safe because we're trying to overcome a lot of messaging that they're receiving about, you know, how unsafe the world is, especially right now when we're in the middle of a pandemic and everything else is going on.
Well, you know, it is, it is a, an indicator that as a city we've set is important and have set a target for. So it, and I would expect that if we're going to resource efforts to move that needle, as hard as that may be, that we would see the resources for it in your budget. Or we need to readdress the target. I mean, although a target of half the people feeling safe overall doesn't seem to be a, an unrealistic target. I actually, when we first said it, I kind of thought that was kind of low. I would have wanted more than half the people in the city to, to, to generally feel safe. And it's your right, when, when we measure, do you feel safe in your home and do you feel safe at work? Those numbers are, are better, but less than our goal. But I think that, you know, that if they speak to needing something to, 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 to address that. And I guess the, the, my, my question really to you is, if you really want to address it, are there some resources that you need that aren't in the proposed budget?
Well, I'm going to be perfectly blunt and say, I don't know how to address making people feel safe. You know, we, we could have a, a whole, you know, unit or department of communications folks that do nothing but, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, put out positive messages about Lakewood and how safe it is. And that might overcome some of what other people, what people are fed in other social media and other, other venues. But to put it bluntly, I don't know how to, to make people feel safe without, because my answer to that is, is numbers. You know, I'm an evident, I'm part of an evidence-based profession. And I look at what the evidence shows and I can show people that, look, you're statistically unlikely to be the victim of a crime. Or, or like I said, struck by lightning or being an accident or anything else. But that's, that's obviously not, that's not moving the needle. And that's not what statistics don't overcome emotion very often. And that's, that's kind of what's, where I'm stuck when we look at making people feel safe.
Well, if you could consider as we move into the next biennium, whether keeping that as a key performance indicator is something we should, we should still do. And if it is, what can we try? And I, I guess I tell you there, there's no, no, no proven method, okay? But there are things you can try.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for the chief? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Tough job and we appreciate all your effort.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Let me get back to my electronic version of the agenda. Need multiple screens. Who's up next, Mr. City Manager, while I reboot my electronic agenda?
It's Paul Bucic, Public Works Engineering Director, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we queue up Paul. Give us the Public Works and Engineering overview.
Certainly will. Take my time and give that to you. Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, rest of the city council members. Today I'm going to go over the functions of the Public Works Engineering Department with you. Highlight some of the accomplishments from the last two years and identify our work plan elements for the coming two years. I know you have the full budget with you, but I don't intend on going through all the budget instead of giving a relatively high flyover of public works engineering. Those of you who've been around the last couple of years might remember, but probably knocks this a bit wrong. I like to tell people in Public Works Engineering that we provide the engineering services to ensure the efficient movement of people and goods for our modern society. We provide the needed expertise to investigate and resolve issues with our transportation infrastructure, our storm and surface water system, as well as we design sanitary sewer infrastructure to serve our community currently on septic systems. That's quite a bit that we take on. There are a lot of essential functions and services that we do that are required by state law, in some cases federal law. For example, we provide a city engineer, that's myself, as well as Public Works Engineering Director, both dual roles per the state requirements for a city. We assure the city is compliant with the state-issued NPDS Phase Two permit under the Federal Clean Water Act. We update the city's six-year transportation improvement plan annually as required by state law. We provide, we perform the safety inspections of all city bridges on a biannual basis. In fact, we just did that last year. We contacted a private firm for a couple that were beyond the capabilities of our second entity, which is Pierce County, which does that under contract to them. We ensure that our one dam, Lake Silicon Dam, is inspected every five years to make sure that it's safe. We perform our pavement condition assessments on all public roads on even numbered years. We use that information to leverage our capital program and go after state and federal grants to maintain those roads at the proper pavement condition index. And we also ensure the proper management of our surface water management revenues and expenses, along with our motor vehicle excise taxes. So while it's not legally mandated for us, it is also very important that we maintain our designation as a certified agency under the DOC guidelines. By doing so, we can administer state and federal grant funds without having the state do them on our behalf. And when they do that, of course, they charge the project funds. Our cost for doing projects is far less than the state and private firms typically. It is important also that we manage all the right-of-way acquisitions under these grant programs to maintain the maximum funding available for us in the city in order to accomplish our projects. An issue that doesn't come up very often, knock on wood, is emergency management activities. But we do participate in the management planning. It's an important function. It's not a legally mandated one. But we do participate in local, regional and statewide planning and exercises that better prepare us to serve our community in actual emergencies. Much of what we do in our department is important to our community and is at the direction of the city council. There's a wide variety of capital-related activities we do that support our community, such as we conduct investigations. We do planning, we do alternatives, evaluation. We submit and administer grant applications. We do administration of capital projects. We do the design typically, except on some rare instances where the project is rather large and to get it done quickly. We do construction administration and inspection in-house and we close out all the projects in accordance with state and federal requirements. Types of projects that I'm speaking of are sidewalks, streetlights, traffic signals. Our annual chip seal program, our annual pothole repair program is beyond our operation and maintenance capability. We do the grind and overlay program. Occasionally do complete streets, referencing to, of course, to our colonial platform project. We do stormwater drainage systems, water quality improvements with stormwater and the sanitary sewer system expansions. In addition to the capital side, we also perform a wide variety of other functions. The updates to the non-motorized plan, which has been on hold, but we're looking to get toward, get moving on that again in 21, 22. I mentioned the transportation improvement plan, our capital improvement, improvement plan. We do a traffic calming program at the request of neighborhoods. We do traffic signal design internally. We have our own traffic management center. We do traffic counts at the request of the public and also as routine measures. So we see what's going on with our traffic and the patterns in our city. We do speed studies to make sure that people are following the law and when they're not, we involve Chief Zaro and his team to help slow people down. And then we look at means by which we can change the configuration of the roadways to slow them down. I mentioned bridge inspections. We also do the maintenance contracting. We do the stripes, the paving markings, the streetlight knockdown repairs. Under the NPDS permit, we do all of the things required, such as the illicit discharge and detection elimination, the temporary erosion setting control during construction on the private side. We inspect private stormwater systems. We do the regional coordination, public outreach, education outreach. And we review and update our stormwater design standards in accordance with ecology's requirements. We also do development review related to any activities outside of the bidding, building envelope. We do a significant number of right-of-way permits every year to make sure that what people are doing in our right-of-way in accordance with safety standards and approved standards for our repair work. We do inspection of private development. We do right-of-way and street vacations. And we also coordinate to a much lesser degree for the franchise agreements. We do all of that with a total of seventeen and a half positions. That's quite a bit. So I'd like to go over some of the highlights of our 2019, 2019 and 2020 projects. I'm not going to touch on all of them, but there are some of them that I think are worth mentioning because they are important. In 2019, 2020, the city council approved us, our ability to implement a pavement degradation fee program. So far, that has brought in $140,000. That is going to be used in the coming year for pavement repairs. We implemented an annual right-of-way permit for utilities because we discovered in 2019 that there are a lot of activities going on that should have had permits issued to them, but the utilities were just going along and doing them as part of the routine activities. After conversations with them and then notifying the council what we'd like to get permission, we implemented this annual right-of-way permit. We have six major utilities have submitted their plans and their traffic control plans. Of the six, five of them were very active, one was not, and it's basically because they pretty much forgot about it. So we reminded them and they promised to do better. But that has shown that depending upon the entity, we have between 15 to 140 different touches on our city right-of-way that we were unaware of between the five of them. We started off with a fee of 500, just as a pilot, see how well it worked. And I'm pleased to say that our assessment in 2020 is that our cost for administering that program falls in real close to the $500, so there's no need to do any increases on that. 2020 is an unusual year. We will be tracking that on an annual basis, see if we can make any adjustments. On the capital design and right-of-way acquisition projects, I want to point out the big one that you're all familiar with. It was a major activity. We've broken it up into two projects, in order to start building on it, and that's the JBLM North Access Improvement Project. We completed designing environmental for the DSEP grant application. Unfortunately, we were not awarded the funds. However, because it was done, we are able to do the first phase one, which is from just west of Interlochen down past Nyanza. We're planning on doing that in twenty twenty-one. Also working on design of a few other projects, and I'll talk about those in a moment. Construction will occur next year. We did do the overlay on Silicon Boulevard from Phillips all the way to Custer. And that was a pretty successful overlay program, very happy to get that done. And we were able to complete our fifth and sixth year of the street chip seal program. This last chip seal program went very well. We haven't had to call out the sweepers at all, so the contractor did a very good job for us. Listed as a sidewalk improvement type of project, but we all know that it's basically a rebuild of complete road. And that's the Veterans Drive from Gravel Lake Drive to American Lake Park. We completed the design and initiated construction. We're not entirely sure we're going to be able to complete it in twenty twenty because of the lateness of the year and how much work is remaining. But I'm still going to take credit for it in the nineteen twenty program and a little bit in the twenty-one, because I think we'll be finishing up early next spring. On our street improvements, we've got our award-winning Colonial Plaza project. We, the awards just keep coming in on that one. It's a great project. Really looking forward to when the night market is able to start up out there. We have such a tremendous ribbon-cutting ceremony, so many people showed up and they really liked the opportunity to come there and celebrate and do the market. We had our Silicon Boulevard eighty-eighth, Waller to Custer Road overlay work. And then, of course, we built a new road, one hundred twenty-third street from Bridgeport to Forty-seventh, and that was a very successful project for us. On the park side, we supported parks with water and sewer facilities in Forest Silicon Park. On the stormwater side, we created a new lake management district, implemented the recommendations. We've done the Eurasian water mill foil control out on American Lake, two years now, two summers. That was a push. We got it done. People who live around the lake are very happy with the, with the outcome. And another big one that, as you all know, took some time to finally get it to fruition is the treatment of Wahaup Lake with the alum treatment. Two treatments occurred this summer. I'm very happy to tell you, and you know this, I want to say it again, that there were no negative impacts that were present at the time of either one of the applications. And to date, we're still not seeing negative impacts on it. On the sewer side, we constructed the Northborne Lane Sewer Extension Project. If you haven't been out there, you should go out there and take a look at it, because it's a really nice looking project. The road's been redone, we got a curved better sidewalk installed too. And then, since I like to take credit twice for the same project, on the sewer side, we did construct the Forest Silicon Park sewer. So there's a lift station out there and it's fully, fully ready for the new bathrooms that are being built right now, as well as the expansions out there for the, in the H barn. On the stormwater side, this is what we do on a regular basis. Diana Hallard does an excellent job working on the stormwater for us, along with Greg Vigran. There's a lot of public education outreach events that occur. And though it may not sound too big of a list, she conducts about five hundred stormwater compliance business inspections over the two-year period. And she's always welcomed into the businesses, which shows she has a great rapport with them. We do investigate illicit discharges. We get twenty to thirty, depending upon the year, a year. Site development review, we did three hundred and seventy-three right-of-way permits in twenty nineteen. And even though the year's not quite done, we've got another two hundred of those we've issued so far in twenty, twenty twenty. Coming up in twenty-one and twenty-two, we've got a couple of key projects I want to just touch on. We plan on working with, we are working with, actually with Jay Bier and CED on implementing the PALS plus permit software. That's going to be a big change for us. On the capital side, we're still working hard on the right-of-way acquisition on the Silicon Boulevard from Waller to Far West Drive. And we'll be working on design on the Pack Highway, one hundred eighth to five hundred twelve. That's our five twelve, excuse me, and South to Comeaway, eighty-eighth to eighty. We'll be doing the overlay of one hundred eighth street from Bridgeport Way to Pack Highway. And I know we'll be doing the seventh year of our street chip seal program. And I am very positive that we're going to be able to do our eighth year of the street chip seal program in twenty twenty-two. Our sidewalk improvements, like I said before, the Veterans Drive is one of the projects that might be done by the end of the year, but I'm not counting on it based on where we are, so I'm going to count that as a twenty twenty-one completion. We have two projects, Lakewood Drive Southwest. We're going to complete that project. The first phase was done two years ago, and the last phase is done today, uh, next year, excuse me. We're doing the design now. One hundred eleventh, one hundred twelfth from Bridgeport to Kendrick Street, the design is occurring this fall and will be constructed in twenty twenty-one. On the Gravel Lake Drive, Washington Boulevard to Nyanza, this is actually just two hundred feet west of Interlochen through the Gravel Lake Drive intersection, all the way down almost to Pack Highway. That's a major project. We're working with some of the craft units right now with some, some concerns, but nothing of any significance. And most importantly is we need to figure out the traffic, how we're going to manage the traffic during the course of the eighteen months of construction. We're working on finalizing the design details and right-of-way for the Safe Routes to Schools, Waller to Phillips Road sidewalk project. And we're finalizing the final details on all the right-of-way acquisition necessary for the Lakewood Drive, one hundred street traffic signal replacement. That should be going out here pretty quick to bid and starting construction first part of twenty twenty-one. On the stormwater side, you're going to see each year there's a twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three improvements, water quality and drainage improvements package. We're looking at all the video inspection that's been done, looking for where we can improve water quality and looking for where we have, have failing infrastructure. And then start putting together plans and specs for that on spot treatments throughout the city. One of the things that we're looking to do in twenty twenty-one that's in the budget is conducting an alternative valuation study on the Clover Creek Floodplain. We've determined that the floodplain is bigger than anyone thought, that it, it floods across I five and into Pack Highway and Bridgeport. And the next step is to do an alternative feasibility evaluation, determine what can be done to alleviate that and move the flooding off the freeway and potentially out of most of the floodplain. On the sewer side, we will, we will be constructing the Maple Street Sewer Extension Project, is under design right now. And then we'll be designing the next sewer extension project. It goes every other year, design, build, design, build. I'd like to transition to the goals and objectives from our department. I just only got to highlight a few of them because there's, there's a fair number of them. Excuse me. One of our objectives is to maintain our overall pavement rating to a minimum level of seventy, that's the PCI level. Part of the separately is the chip sealing program and helps us keep it up at a higher level. I am happy to report that our major arterials right now are the CPI of around eighty-five. And this is primarily due to all the investments that the community has been putting into the arterials by the street rebuilds, the overlay program. In twenty-one, twenty-two, we're going to be implementing the transportation CIP plans, the swim and sewer CIP plans too. And there's a number of grants that we've applied for that we're waiting to hear back on. Yesterday, myself and Wes and I spent the afternoon going over three of the projects that we had submitted for, for, one was our biking pad and two for Safe Routes to Schools. The Pine Street Sidewalk and pedestrian crossing was one of them. And then they wanted to take a look at Clover Park High School Sidewalk from Gravel Lake Drive to Highland. The last one was Far West Drive Sidewalk and Bike Lane, where we wanted to fill in all the sidewalks that's missing on the west side of Far West Drive. It was a very blustery day, but Mr. Ah was, uh, he, he was, he was a trooper. He was out there by himself in the wind and the rain, showing everybody on his phone. And I felt we got really positive feedback. They were asking if we could make some minor changes to this, to that, to get it a better grant application, which I appreciate hearing. And you've already heard from the city manager that we're in the strong running for three million dollars from TIB for our first phase of construction, that's the Gravel Lake Drive project. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we have identified four new performance measures we want to start tracking. The first one was, how are we doing as far as completing our CIP on schedule? In twenty nineteen, we had seven projects that went out, six of which were on time, one which was not because we're still working on getting the necessary right-of-way from property owners. On the CIP projects completed within the original estimate, I'm going to report there were four out of the six. But I'm not giving you the full six because two of them had change orders. So technically, within the original estimate, they were over the original estimate, still within the funding level, but beyond the original estimate. These were change orders, and one in particular was because there were additional streetlights knocked down. Decided to add to the contract because we had good prices and basically we had cost recovery mechanisms for doing that. On private development, there were two things that we wanted to look at because private development is all about timing and money. And time is money on private development, so there are two measures. We were looking at, how are we doing on reviewing our site development permits? Our target was thirty days. We wanted to get it down to thirty days. In twenty nineteen, we were twenty-nine days. Twenty twenty so far, we're at thirty-five days. That's an area we're going to focus on and see what we can do to bring that down within our target limits. On the percent of right-of-way permits issued within the target timeline, our timeline is five days. We establish it's five days, a reasonable measure. In both twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we hit six days. And I think, and I've been talking to my staff, I think what it is, is sometimes it takes longer because questions go back to the applicants. And then they take their time to get back to us, so that's counting against us. I'm going to look to see what we can do to, to rectify that issue. At this time, I'm done with my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from Mr. Bucic. Well, I, well, people are thinking, if they have any, I'll ask kind of an overriding question with the budget going forward. Is there any part of this budget that limits you or constrains your ability to proceed on projects where we have grant funding?
No.
Mr. Whalen.
Mr. Bucic, with the onset of the PALS-like application for the city of Lakewood, how would you expect that to reduce the permit time for folks in both residential and commercial projects?
I think I want to wait on answering that in part because I want to know more about all the intricacies of how it's going to work for us.
Okay. Do we have some sort of thoughts on performance measures that we hope to achieve with the the investment in the system?
Well, I think from my perspective, the measures are going to be the same as they are now, are we able to read our target dates. And then, how many hours are we needing to spend on it? The intake, intake measure is going to be actually easier for the applicant. And then it's going to be easy for our staff because all the comments are going to go into a common location that anybody can look at at any time.
Do we have enough folks at the counter to process permits? Are you pretty comfortable based on what's going on in the economy and how we get it out of COVID that we'll have enough bodies to do what you need done?
Yes.
Okay. I know that's not completely all public works, but it's all part of the, the process to getting stuff accomplished. Okay, that's it for me. I mean, you guys have done yeoman's work on getting grants and doing the projects. We're really proud of everything you've accomplished and the, the community is really appreciative. I hear nothing but laudatory comments on what we're doing with right-of-way improvements and street lighting and sidewalks. And the consistent comment is, keep it up, you know, keep doing more of the same, so I appreciate it.
Uh, thank you. I, I have to say that we couldn't do it without the support of the city council. And I really do mean that you've all been extremely supportive of us, making sure that we are provided with the funds and the resources to do the project.
We, we are a lucky community in many ways with, you know, bright minds at the helm there, so thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bucic, just a, a few questions about on page eight of the, of what you, what our packet, I guess, what was sent to us, and it's transportation capital projects. And on the chip seal, local access roads and, and I, and I, and I want your opinion on this. We, I mean, the city manager made remarks about it. Right now, there's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars set aside in twenty twenty-one and nothing in twenty twenty-two. And then I don't, I guess I don't see the pavement patching projects in there. And maybe that doesn't count as capital. Tell me about the status of the chip seal program in twenty twenty-two. And you mentioned pavement patching, but I don't see it in there. What's your intent on pavement patching or?
Yeah, you, you don't see pavement patching in there because it's buried in the minor capital, major maintenance, and it's also a part of the chip seal program. So the chip seal program has a component of that, which is the pavement patching that needs to be done. There's rarely enough money in the chip seal to handle all the pavement patching and the chip seals. So we use some of the resources in the minor CIP for pavement patching, so that it not only gets us to a complete and ready road surface for the chip seal, but it also addresses other areas, minor areas throughout the city. Mr., the city manager, Mr. Caulfield and I have spoken about the, the twenty twenty-two. I recognize that in order to build some of our other CIP, we need to draw from something. I, like him, I am very confident that as the economy rebounds, we'll be able to refill those two buckets for the chip seal and the minor CIP.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I said, we, we know where we want to do it. We've got it laid out. We're ready for it.
Okay, so on, on those transportation capital projects on, on page eight, the, the big one next year is clearly the, the, the half portion, the Gravel Lake Drive to Interlochen, west of Interlochen project. We're going to fund that mainly through bonding, I believe, and some other items. In twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, what items on page eight there are not funded? Is, is it, is it just that big one, the second year of the JBLM North Access Improvement Project?
That's correct. All the rest are funded. And if I might point out one thing, because of the way the funding goes in the bond sales, the nine point three five one million dollars in twenty twenty-one, we will be using about seven point six of that. The rest will be carried forward and be used to, as a part of our funding for the twenty twenty-two program.
Okay.
Well, on that program, we have a series of different grants that we're looking at applying for. There's another federal grant we're looking to apply for. We're also, as I said, the TIB, they haven't given us official word, but it's, it's everything but that. Three million dollars is going to be coming to us for that project. But because they've got their own cash flow issues, they won't be able to give us the money until twenty twenty-two. So in twenty twenty-two, we'll get three million dollars, knock on wood, as looking right now for that project.
For the first part of the project?
Correct.
So then we can carry over the bonding into the second part of the project if necessary?
That's correct. That, that's the plan. And then when I asked them also, I want to be really clear, we're going to build this in twenty twenty-one. If you pay us in twenty twenty-two and we've already built it, is that going to be a problem for you? And they said, no, we will, we will pay you the money. They won't be able to give us a lump sum. Evidently having cash flow issues like everybody else. But they said that it would be paid back to us likely over six to nine months. Well, that means we're going to use money that we might want to set aside for another project in twenty twenty-two. We're going to use that money now and then we're going to get the three million dollars from them in twenty twenty-two.
So how, how are we doing on right-of-way for Silicon Boulevard?
It's a work in progress. Right now, for the Safe Routes to Schools, schools component of that, we're in the final throes with the couple of different property owners, a little bit of word smithing, a little bit like KFC. They're, in principle, they've agreed to it, but they just want some clarity on how long their construction driveway is going to be impacted, so they want some language on that. One of the other property owners on the opposite side for the remainder of the sidewalk, it's not part of the Safe Routes, it's a part of the sidewalk component. There's issues with her lender and she's working with them and we're working with them a lot. So it's coming along nicely. Going further to the west, we're identifying the, the needs on that. And the plan is to have the right-of-way certified September of next year.
Okay, so the work won't, the construction won't occur there this coming year?
For that portion, that's correct. We only have design right-of-way. We don't- For that portion, that's correct. We only have design right away. We don't have, uh, construction past Weller. From Weller going east, we have the funds for doing that work.
Oh, you, you do. So, so will we be seeing all the sidewalks put in next year between the portion that you did this year, that you paved this year on Silicon Boulevard? Are they getting sidewalks next year?
Yeah, what, what we've been looking at is we don't want to take city money and cont, pardon my expression, but contaminate it with federal money. State money on the safe routes and schools. We wanna keep those money separate because of some requirements. So we're looking at, can we put out one contract or do we put out two contracts? And it's looking right now like we're gonna put out two contracts. The first one is the safe routes and schools. That's all, all gonna be on the north side. From Phillips to Weller, you deal with all that. And then put out a separate contract for the south side and then continuing all the way down to eighty eight to do the sidewalks and the lights, street lighting.
Okay. It's the right away after.
Correct.
You don't have any money for right away after Weller.
I believe, uh, I, I'd have to go back and confirm that. We're working on the right away and I believe we have the funds in the program for the right away already. Um, so that's, that's not the issue for us. The issue is once we get that done, then we have to go back and we have to get the construction funds.
Oh, there's no construction dollars yet. Okay, okay. All right. Uh, that's, that's it for now. I, I really do appreciate all your work. Um, I'm glad to see we're still going forward with the sewer stuff and, and, and kinda continuing to build out uh, the, the Tillicum Woodbrook area. And, you know, surface water is always a big deal and will never, it, it will always be a big deal and always be a bigger deal, I guess. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll just leave it for now. I was gonna ask about, but I don't know that I'll ask much about the your, your list on page twenty one. All the other beautiful projects that we could be doing. Oh, no, I do have one question about next year. The money set aside for street li, or for the streetlights.
Yes.
Does, is that suffi, I don't know what a streetlight costs to put in. So is that sufficient to continue the build out? Are we continuing on this four or five year plan that we have to? I think by twenty twenty four, we'll have the whole place lit.
That's the goal, twenty four or twenty five. Um, the next year, what we're looking to do is the streetlights on gravelly drive in front of town center. That's an expensive venture. But we were able to have some money left over this year. It's gonna carry forward into next year. So it's gonna allow us to do those lights. Plus there's another section of area that we wanna do in twenty twenty one also. So what we do is we take a look at how much money we, we allocate and we've requested and, and been given every year. And we design the streetlight program accordingly for that. We also actively work for the C D B G grant funds. Like this last year, we got a hundred and sixty three thousand dollars of C D B G grant funds for streetlights. So that was, um, I mean, we can anticipate it, but we certainly take it and then we go, we, we build with that.
Okay. And that has to be in neighborhoods that meet the qualifications?
Correct.
Great, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Or any other questions from council? Well, seeing none, I'd like to also add my thanks, uh, Mr. Boushich. I always say it's, you know, municipal government's a three course meal. Public safety, infrastructure and parks for dessert. Focus on what you do best and you are the, you, you and your department are the visible manifestation of progress in the city. It's what people see, what they have to stop for, what they have to drive around. And, uh, you get a lot more co, compliments than complaints as a, uh, member of the city council when somebody has their street torn up and improved. So, uh,
Thank you.
Thanks again for keeping things rolling because, uh, the, the, uh, contrast with some of our neighbors is dramatic and we really appreciate it.
Well, it's our pleasure. So we enjoy doing it. Thank you.
So it looks like the, uh, next, uh, department up is a municipal court and, uh, I think we have Judge Man, Mansfield for this.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear. Thank you so much. It was only a short while ago that I was before the city council being sworn in as judge in Lakewood. Um, and although my official start date was October, October first, I spent about a week, uh, prior observing the flow of the court and familiarizing myself with the team and what a fantastic team it is. The court administrator, Dina Wright, and the court staff have been so welcoming and have given me so much support. Um, they've really made my transition very smooth and I feel extremely fortunate to work with them. Tonight I wanna share a bit about my background. Um, I wanted to speak about Veterans Court and to touch upon our ideas regarding a mental health court. I would also like to highlight some technical aspects of our court processes, namely O Courts and the document management system. Finally, I'll give a very brief and broad overview of our recommended budget. Since I'm new to the team, uh, I think it's a good idea to offer a bit about who I am. I'm a Nashville, Tennessee native and I'm an army brat. And we moved around some, but I mainly grew up in Norfolk, Virginia. I did my undergraduate work in English literature at Columbia University. And upon graduation, I worked in public relations and at the New York City Parks Department. I attended law school at the University of Washington. Um, after getting to the rain, I decided to make Washington my home because it's so beautiful here. I spent my early career in Seattle, but for the past ten years, uh, I lived in the north end with my husband and son. Most of my career has been in public defense as a criminal and civil lawyer. Most recently, I worked in the dependency unit at the Department of Assigned Counsel, representing parents and dependency proceedings. One of the highlights and something I'm very, uh, proud of is my participation in the Best for Babies Court Team Model, or Baby Court as it, it's affectionately called. Baby Court is a therapeutic court model that frontloads services and community connections to families' dependencies with children aged zero to three. The hands-on and team-oriented approach in Baby Court has yielded impressive results. Defendants feel cared for and they don't feel like a number. And as a result, they are more invested in their own progress. I helped implement and promote this model and I'm happy to say that it's now being replicated across the state. I did receive the Pierce County Standing Ovation Award for my work in this arena. One of the main reasons I was so excited to join the team here in Lakewood is because of the Veterans Treatment Court. This is also a therapeutic court that helps to break the cycle of a veteran's involvement in the criminal justice system. Working with community partners and resources, Veteran, Veterans Court helps to reintegrate the veterans, uh, back into the community successfully. One of the reasons that I made a point to observe court well before I started here was that I was able to see the last Veterans Court presided over by, uh, Susan Adams, the outgoing judge. I was really impressed by the community spirit and the investment from all the team players. Everyone was moved to tears at the heartfelt sharing and healing that occurred as a result of the community supports received by the vets and also the sports that the vets, uh, gave each other. Today I presided over my first veteran court docket and I remain very impressed with this program as it provides a great deal of structure and accountability for the participants. And speaking of accountability, I wanna give a shout out, uh, right now to Commission Court Officer Cameron Himes, who is a centerpiece of this work. He has completed a course with the National Association of Drug Court Professionals and he received the justiceforvets.org training grant. So he works with the veterans on a weekly basis and checks in on their progress, um, and various aspects of their recovery. He himself is a vet and spent three years in the army with the first striker brigade at the Joint Base Lewis McCord. His experience as a successful veteran and drug court professional is invaluable to this program. I'm interested in spreading the news about this great court model. And as a member of the magazine committee at the Pierce County Bar Association, I'll be writing an article that will highlight the great veterans program, uh, for the Pierce County Lawyer Magazine. As a big believer in therapeutic courts, I'm very excited to continue to support the growth of this results oriented court model. I wanna share that we are in the beginning stages of looking towards creating a mental health court in Lakewood. We are all familiar with the suffering that occurs as a result of the ravages of mental illness. Too many times our citizens who are mentally ill become homeless and or have substance abuse issues. Many, because of their illness, interface with law enforcement and become entangled in the criminal justice system. Too often jails and hospitals are way stations for them and these stopgap measures are just not enough. I believe the chief, uh, spoke to some of these issues in his presentation. That's why we're in the beginning stages of, uh, looking at a mental health court in Lakewood that would offer alternatives to jails and hospital stays for mentally ill citizens. A treatment court model specifically designed to address the needs of the mentally ill would positively impact not only the defendants who came before the, uh, came through the court doors, but also the wider community. We have begun conversations with mental health professionals who are well positioned to build relationships of trust with those affected with mental illness. Building trust is a key piece because it'll be in that context of trust that the individuals will be able to gain more stability in treatment and make the community connections. I'm looking forward to continuing to lay the groundwork for a mental health court in Lakewood, uh, because we feel a very important need in our community. It's important to note that all the fabulous court programming in Lakewood is supported by technology. We've moved away from a paper-based system to a paperless system. And one of the highlights of this movement is the O Courts Electronic Document and Calendaring System. O Co, O Court software takes case information, uh, from the state's judicial information system, or J I S as it's called, and transmits the case information into an electronic form, which is completed by the parties and saved electronically. The software can identify a case such as a D U I, which allows the parties to load the forms and, uh, that are required for a particular hearing. We are also working with the city to implement a document management system, or D M S, to integrate with the O Court software. And while both of these systems will achieve, uh, greater efficiencies, the court is presently working with an archaic state system, J I S, which has long been scheduled for updates. With regard to the recommended budget, I wanted to mention that the municipal court will experience a reduction of one F T E and that will be spread over five positions for the twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two B I N M budget. This is due to the ending of the contract, uh, for court services for University Place. In conclusion, I just wanna thank the council for giving me the opportunity to serve this vibrant and diverse community. And I'm excited to work with such a talented team of professionals. And I look forward to continuing to help provide excellent and necessary services to the cities, to the residents of the city of Lakewood.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, before I ask if there are any questions, I just note that, uh, we do not intend to, uh, have anything close to a confirmation hearing for the municipal court judge ever. So, uh, you're safe. We like to be, we like to try to be all, all the same team here. Um, any questions for the judge? Mr. Whalen? You're on mute.
There we go. I just wanna say, number one, welcome Judge Mansfield. We're so proud to have you here. Uh, it was a year ago today that I enjoyed a fabulous wedding of my daughter in Nashville, Tennessee.
Oh.
Where she met her husband and they both went to school down there, Belmont and then Vander.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the city of my birth.
I love Nashville, so, uh, love to have that, uh, connection. Um, I am really excited about what you're doing with regard to mental health court. I think that is a huge need. I think it's such a wonderful opportunity. There are some opportunities for increased funding at the county level that may happen in the next year or so. And if we can make Lakewood the example of what really works, and I'm so excited about that. It could be expanded through the region here in Pierce County. So to the extent that you and the chief can get together and talk about best practices and the what-ifs and then reach that great expertise out, we can really do something incredible here and I'm excited about that.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, I think that's awesome. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Mr. Bulkey and then Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, welcome aboard, uh, Judge Mansfield.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whalen stole my thunder on the, on the mental health court. I, and I hope that we can find, so I'm, I, I'm excited that your move, this is something you, you wanna pursue. Um, and looking at funding pieces and then it'll be up to us to, uh, figure out a long-term funding approach uh, to, to, uh, I think both those courts. I, I think we do have a commitment to the Veterans Court also. I don't know. Are, are we supporting the Veterans Court with grants still or are we doing it out of our general fund?
I believe there is a Department of Justice grant, but as far as other supports, I am not exactly sure. Please remember that I've been working at the city for exactly two weeks.
Yeah, and I'm kind of, and that's kind of an open question to the city manager also. Yeah, I'm not expecting you to be, to be an accountant on this. Um, but I, I do, oh. John wants to talk.
Uh, Councilmember Bulkey, um, yeah, the Veterans Court is fully funded with a federal grant for, from the periods two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty two.
Okay, so we're good through twenty two on the Veterans Court. And then the Mental Health Court, we'll see with grants and, and whatnot and, and Mr. Whalen has alluded to some potential opportunities hopefully in the future. And, 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 and let me say, Judge, that with COVID, the jails have kind of cleared out. I mean, we've been kind of waiting for this experiment of how many people, uh, the county has been doing pre-trial release, uh, of, of felons and, and they were working on that. Then COVID hit and now the jail is a little more than half of what it was, you know, it was about six hundred people a night, I guess, when it used to be between a thousand and eleven hundred a night. I personally don't believe because of changes in our society that we're get, that we're gonna go back to the model of a thousand a night or eleven hundred a night. Um, and so I think it's gonna be really important going forward, uh, to figure out alternatives. And alternatives at work, not just alternatives, it's to say, yeah, go back out, you're back out on the street. That's not gonna work for anybody. It doesn't work for the general public, just makes the public mad if they become crime victims again and it doesn't help the, the, the individuals involved in the criminal justice system. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited that you're going forward with that and energizing that. And so I'm, and I hope that we can be, as a council, be supportive of that endeavor.
Thank you so very much.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judge Mansfield, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, to keep this on our radar. Uh, the council has always had an interest in visiting your, the Veterans Court. And before this came to pass, before COVID, it was currently in the making, but I don't want it to drop off the radar. I would, we would love to still have a visit with the Veterans Court.
Well, please know that, um, at the court, even though it's open, we do practice social distancing. And, uh, I don't allow, uh, more than, uh, fourteen or fifteen folks in the court. So, um, we could set up a scenario where you could see part of a docket. Um, and I, I tell you, it is, it is really something to, as I said, I presided over my first docket today and it is something, uh, to And it is something to see someone graduate from that program. I saw that today, and he articulated how much the supports he received from the court helped him to turn his life around and make positive steps for more stability. So just being a part of that is one of the best things about being a judge.
Very good. Thank you. Well, I'm sure the council eventually will get us a group together that would like to get a date started for you. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I'd just like to, you know, share my comments regarding the support on that. You know, Lakewood is the natural for Veterans Court being physically joined at the hip with JBLM. So I think we're more cognizant of, of issues involving military and their families and, and more supportive than people who are, are more removed. And it reflects the, the density of veterans in our population. But at the same time, we have Western State Hospital in Greater Lakes, and we were the first to put a mental, mental health co-responder on the streets. And so we, we also are cognizant of the mental health issues and have been supportive there. So your, your interest in moving forward with the therapeutic courts in general, and the Mental Health Court particularly, I think, is well-suited for Lakewood. And hopefully, we can be accruciable for some success and show others how to do it.
Yes, thank you so much for the support. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and we, we're glad to have you on board and, and hope you enjoy the trials and tribulations of the bench.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Losing my agenda here.
I'm done.
We're moving to administrative services.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. Today or this evening, I am presenting the budget for the Administrative Services Department, which consists of 16 FTEs allocated amongst three divisions. Those divisions are Finance, Human Resources, and Information Technology. Within these divisions, we are responsible for the city's administration of the non-departmental budget, the Fleet and Equipment and Risk Management Fund. We support the Independent Salary Commission, the Civil Service Commission, and the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Internally, we support city departments. So depending on the priorities and the projects at hand, we adjust our work plan accordingly. With that said, we also have a set of fundamental operating functions, which include, but are not limited to, one, making sure our employees and vendors are paid timely and accurately, producing financial documents that are transparent, informative, and are worthy of national awards, ensuring that our controls are in place to safeguard assets and that the financial management and reporting passes state audit, attracting and retaining a high, highly qualified diverse workforce, fostering amicable employee labor relations, increasing employee awareness of risk management best practices, policies, procedures, and resources, supporting the city's goals and objectives of streamlining operations through systems integration and automation, providing stable and reliable information technology infrastructure, protecting the integrity of the city's information and assets by strengthening cybersecurity. And lastly, ensuring that our policies, practices, and procedures and technology are in compliance with the ever-changing requirements, rules, and regulations. So as you notice in our budget, we have a lot of accomplishments. I'm only going to highlight several from each of the divisions. We've achieved the clean audits. And noting that the current audit has four components, we're still working on the 2019 audit, but we did achieve a clean audit on our financial statements and our grounds. We achieved the prestigious national awards for financial reporting and budgeting. We achieved an AA bond rating from S&amp;P for 2019, GO bonds for transportation. We formed the city's equity team and supported the work to promote workforce diversity and institutional change within our organization. We provided COVID-19 pandemic support, including policies, procedures, and secure remote work access. We achieved AWC's Well City Award to achieve a 2% savings on medical insurance premiums. We enhanced the network security and intrusion detection system and implemented a new citywide cyber awareness training and program. And lastly, we completed various information technology projects resulting in increased connectivity while reducing costs. Our major initiatives for the upcoming biennium include achieving those same things that we did in 2019 and 20, and that includes achieving clean audits, earning the national awards for financial reporting and budgeting, and maintaining a bond rating at a double A when we go out for our next bond issue. And continuing to issue bonds for transportation projects as well as swim bonds for storm drainage elements of the JBLM North Access Project if approved. We will continue increasing collaboration and resource sharing with the Clover Park School District on issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion, continue the negotiation and implement collective bargaining agreements, implement the citywide document management system, and evaluate opportunities for partnership with Pierce County GIS, services for greater efficiency, consistency, and availability of data maps. And lastly, continue to enhance cybersecurity awareness training. Because as you've known and heard from our chief information officer, it only takes one person to open the wrong attachment. So those are the things that we, we do in our department. And before I conclude, I want to address the question that Councilmember Bulkey had on the impact of not collecting replacement reserves. So we have been collecting replacement reserves consistent with the city's financial policies. We are deferring about $1.9 million in 2021 and 2022. If you recall from the pandemic memo that was presented to the city council in June of, this last June, we had talked about an interfund loan potentially from the Fleet and Equipment Fund. This serves pretty much the same purpose as what we had thought about doing, but this is a much better way to handle it. You also heard from the city manager that if things, if our economy picks up and projections actually come in better than projected, one of the first things that will be restored is the replacement reserves. So we have that in our, that was one of the caveats of deferring these replacements. At the end of 2021, we have budgeted or projected about $3.5 million in ending fund balance reserves in the Fleet and Equipment Fund and $3.2 million ending fund balance in 2022. So keep in mind that we have equipment that will not be scheduled for replacement, you know, going out maybe six to eight years. And depending on the type of equipment, it could go even further. But we're trying to advance funding for those. The other thing is departments. We don't all automatically replace equipment just because they need their useful life. There's an evaluation, the cost benefit of keeping equipment versus replacing it. So, you know, what we've seen is a lot of costs that are going in to replace something that is old, and it just makes more economical sense to just replace it. So I hope that answers Councilmember Bulkey's questions. And the, really, that, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Ms. Kraus? Mr. Whalen?
Question, but I want to preface it with a comment again. Kudos to you and your team, Ta. You guys have done yeoman's work and make us look good, you know, day in and day out, year to year. My question to you, as an example of the incredible work you both, all of you have done, but the simple, I shouldn't say simple, but the task of increasing our bond rating, the double A, what would you estimate, estimate would be the savings to the city as a result of that by putting the bonds out to market, getting a better rating, better interest rate on that? I mean, that alone results in a good savings for the city.
So I will tell you that the financial policies that we have in place has helped us achieve these bond ratings. So just to go back to where we were before 2014, we were at an A rating. So an A rating is, it's still investment grade, but it's a medium grade, upper medium grade. And we were just right at the middle of that. In 2014, we had a bond rating, and that took us from A to a double A minus. In 2018, we had another bond rating, and that took us from a double A minus to a double A. So where we are, where we were in 2014, we're at right in the middle of the upper medium grade. Where we are today, we are at a high grade, right in the middle of the high grade. The next step would be a double A plus, and that would get us to the top of the high grade. And then prime would be at the triple A. For our city, I think it would be very difficult to move us beyond the double A. It would require a lot more reserves than what we have. We would need to have a lot, I believe, more diverse revenues than what we are seeing. And to be honest, I'm not even trying to achieve it. My goal is really just to maintain where we are at. And everything that the council has supported, the policies that the council has approved, has really helped us get to where we are. And I'm.
From 14 to now, just that improvement that you've described, I mean, that has saved the city measurably in terms of the bond costs as a result of the better improved rating, right?
Yes, the conversations that I've had with bond counsel, our financial advisor, and one of the first things that comes out is, you guys have a good bond rating, so that, that will help a lot. And we have gotten really good ratings. And, you know, it's easy for me to go into a bond rating presentation, even in the situation that we currently are. I'm pretty confident, knock on wood, that I can maintain the double A bond rating.
Just find some more money.
You faded out there, Mr. Whalen.
I was just telling her thank you for all of it, but just find us some more money, you know, for 2022 and 23.
I've got the printing press going downstairs. I've ordered more ink and paper.
Perfect. I like it.
It's the plates that count, Ta, not the paper, not the, it's the plates. Just, just, just saying.
We had those on backup.
Let's, let's know a woman from New Jersey who told stories of going down in the basement when she was a child and seeing her father and his friends printing the money.
I will have to tell you a funny story. There is something that I learned. There are a couple of things that you cannot say, even if you're jokingly. So I went into the store, gave them my $100 bill, and told them I just printed it off. And you should have seen the look on the person's face. And then I found out you cannot say that kind of stuff. So this is only for you guys.
Hey, Ta, I say that often too, and I haven't gotten to look like that yet. So, you know, I don't know. Maybe the ones I print work.
Maybe you're just very credible, more so.
Oh, and you're saying you're not? Is that what I hear you saying?
Maybe it's the tone of my voice.
That would probably apply to the city manager.
Well, thank you for maintaining financial credibility on behalf of the city. There are those of us on the council who couldn't do that. But the, as Mr. Whalen indicated, the difference between, you know, being down to an A minus and being a double A is a lot of money when you go to finance something. And there are many cities that are, are down in the A minus category. And you might be investment grade, but not much. So thanks again. We look forward to yet another clean audit. I did the intake interview with the state auditor's office about a week ago, so.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Caulfield?
I am, I do, Mayor. Real quick, I was talking with Councilmember Farmer this morning, and one of the things we're talking about is, you know, how can the council, you know, get together in a real-world environment and hold a meeting? And it's, I think you all know, you know, phase two essentially prohibits that. But one of the things I did is I contacted Candace Bach with AWC. And this was a follow-up, again, follow-up conversation that Councilmember Farmer and I had was, and I said, yeah, you know, I mean, the governor has been loosening up certain segments of the economy, whether it's sports, or restaurants, or religious facilities and the like. And wouldn't it be nice if he could do the same thing for legislative bodies? And Ms. Bach responded, well, that's good timing. And apparently, I talked to her about this in the past. She said that to me, but I don't remember. But in any event, she, she noted that for the last couple of months, that AWC has been speaking with the governor's office about this. And apparently, the governor's office is now considering looking at doing that, that legislative bodies would be able to meet in a public forum, though similar to the list that I just gave you. You know, it would be under certain circumstances and under certain, you know, limited restrictions and things along those lines. For example, you know, it would depend on the size of the facility, capacity, social distancing would have to be adhered to, face masks, et cetera. So I said, I said, well, you know, it would be good if the governor would really do that for legislative bodies. And even if it went into effect on January 1st, that would be, that would be fantastic, and it would allow us to plan accordingly. And she responded that it could happen in the next couple of weeks. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that, that could be coming down the pike here in the very near term.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bulkey.
At, at the risk, I know this is a budget study session, but before it slips my mind, I'd like to ask the council and with the city manager present, we had a couple of conversations tonight dealing with mental health. And I, I would like us to think about having a study session where we hear kind of the soup to nuts, what happens i- in the system, what our coresponders do, what the mock T does, what the Mcert does. Tonight, they were talking about taking people to St. Clair, but I thought we had Wellfound. I thought we had 120-bed mental health hospital in Tacoma now that they were supposed to go, so that's news to me. We also have evaluation and treatment centers. And, and I think we need to, for our purposes going forward, understand how those things fit together. And then the final piece, after they get out of whatever they're in, where they're supposed to go live. So I would, I would like to throw that out there for the body to, and if, if everybody thinks that's something, we'll give the city manager time to work on that because it's, it's a lot of moving parts. It may be something that we can do when we all get together, and we can socially distance in a big room, and then have folks come in and, and kind of lay out a map for us.
Agreed, I hear you. I second that motion. I think it's fantastic, and we should be involved in that conversation so we get better educated. I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think it will set up, set us up with a better foundation going forward as the county reconsider's a mental health tax, the legislature goes into session, and, and does things, that people relook at the involuntary treatment act. So when we're making decisions, we have a, collectively have a better understanding of what the difference between an Mcert and a mock T and a recovery center, and a Cohen's Veterans Center, and an emergency room, and whatever else is available are, and, and what they do and don't provide for people who need help. So we, looking over the horizon, we, we should probably set that up as a session where we have some outside folks that can come in and explain what they do. Try to.
What the gaps are.
Try to limit their patience at the same time if we have multiple parties. So, Mr. City Manager, if you could look over, like, look over the horizon and, and it's probably going to be late in the year.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. Mayor, we could try for maybe, maybe December or January timeframe. Given that, it would probably require the coordination of a number of entities. Because a lot of these items, these are not things that the city is directly overseeing or involved in. Because a lot of these items, these are not things that the city is directly overseeing or involved in.
Yeah, we, yeah, we might have pass-through money that we need to direct judiciously. Uh, that's kind of one, one of the reasons I'd be concerned about it. So is there anything further, Mr. Coffield?
There is none, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, then. My script here. Uh, council will recess into executive session for approximately sixty minutes pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one ten-one G to review the performance of a public employee. The council is not expected to take final action. Following the executive session, I will come back to announce the adjournment. We're in recess.
We take a couple of minutes of a quick break there, Dom, before.
Yeah, well, the, till quarter after we're at break and then sixty minutes from when we leave here.
Great.
I'm back.
Good evening.
You're still awake.
For the time being.
We're adjourned.
And in queue.